Pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
I know.
Do you have any more help here? In already? Is that something that we have to go to everyone and explain everything else on? Or is that just saying? Hmm. I think that's just the thing I need to ask Michael about one. Because the one that's going to explain everything is titled differently than that. Because I got them out of the one.
All discussion on these children's coming to school. All discussion on these children's coming to school, twenty-one?
Something.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. This is a good context. This by the boy?
Uh huh.
Not only helps the teachers, but it helps the parents know what to put on it to help let the teachers know.
Soulshine. Can there be approved in closed discussion?
It was pulled apart separately. It's all separate. It's all separate and everything.
It's only five dollars and separate.
With what?
There's a tax for five dollars on there.
Someone saw that.
So is the other check in the stack? Okay.
Eversource, PSNH, there's so many bills for that, and it's all on the same date.
For Eversource?
Yeah.
I'll look into that.
What's the number, Steve?
Uh, starts at, uh, two four two ninety, ninety-one. Two four two ninety-four. Two four three oh four. Two of the same dates.
They look to be different meters. On the bills, they're different meters.
And this is one check number, Steve? So there will be several invoices and one check is cut?
No, there's four, four checks.
Yeah. There's one is fourteen eighty-eight Wakefield Road, sixty Taylor Way, and three for sixty Taylor Way with different, meter numbers.
Which, which one, do you have, still have that out? What was the other address?
Fourteen eighty, wait, this one? Is there power over there?
No, there might be down, which, how much is that one? That might be the one downtown garage, but that shouldn't be, shouldn't even be using that yet.
Fourteen eighty-eight Wakefield Road. Sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
That would be.
That would be town road.
Yeah. And Meadow Street is one sixty-two eighty-eight. Sixty Taylor Way is thirty-four forty-three oh seven. And sixty Taylor Way is sixty-nine ninety-eight.
Where do we have a Meadow Street?
Probably the Paxton right over.
I don't know if building on Meadow Street.
It could be the flashing lights to, for the traffic control. It could be a new, up there. Name, but maybe with a different.
Do we have a vendor list? You know? I don't see one. Have you ever seen a vendor list?
No. You could have and just know what they do. That'd be easy enough, because you want a spreadsheet, right, from your quick books or whatever.
I brought.
I brought one with me. I got it from county.
That, that actually should be in the school district report at the end of the year, in that little book. There's listed vendors, or, well, it's in the town report, but in our school.
Should be pretty easy to download right out of the system as well.
Yep, I believe it is.
But is there like an approved vendor list?
Keep it on the way.
I think that would be a good financial control, having place.
Is that from county?
Yeah.
Can I see it, please?
Because apparently they brought it up to county, that's how people are stealing money. They set up fake vendors. So they, they just initiated the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's a, you mean kind of form that they have to fill out?
Well, say who they are, and they fill out a W nine. I mean, some of these you don't, you know, you don't see on here very often.
But they'll law online, Steve?
Uh, no.
No? So it's like, you can't just go online and put out the form?
This form?
Yeah.
I don't believe it's online. You want this one?
Right, it can't un-sign it right now? I thought that you said it was.
No, it's, I didn't look at this, so I, because it was pulled separately, I thought it was fifty, but it's not. So that one should be with the other one.
But it's on its own separate?
It's on its own separate, because the chance, I guess.
And I thought that, alright.
When prezeo services our buses and it has to do with intercom radios, you call outside vendor to come in? Or do they have qualified technicians to do that? To do what? To work on, um, intercom radio speakers and.
I think they have someone else usually get care of this, uh, two-way radio.
Two-way? It says intercom, so. Sometimes intercoms, it gets somebody speaking, everybody hearing, and two ways is back and forth. Believe it's a separate vendor for the two ways, the, uh, intercom systems in the bus, they would take care of. Do you know if sixteen's out of the shop here? Sixteen's down.
I thought this was the check that was rented?
Yes, no, it's the app.
Have we been having frost or something on the buses already? How do you do a repair of a right side mirror not to frost it? There's no frosting. A miracle. Is there a chance I can give you an answer on that question? Like the number wide. Plus number thirty-one. Had a repair of a right side of the mirror and not to frost it.
And they, the mirrors frost, they do that on their own?
Yeah, heated mirrors.
Okay, because I, I drive early in the morning and usually it fogs up, and I have mirrors like that. That's kind of my seal off fog down.
I've been using mine already.
So you have to hit the fog? No, the frost. Shall we know the fog?
Fogging the frosting?
I like to go in first.
I don't know, they need their mirrors clear, so. One of the buses was having trouble with it.
I did, I, I didn't consider condensation or, or. Fogging, when, when the word frost, we think of freeze, and we haven't had a freeze, so. Maybe there's a simple answer to that.
I had freeze at my house one morning, actually, I was trying to.
No, sir.
Yes, it was, it was like scrapeable, covering my mom's face.
Really?
Yes, scrapeable frost.
But it had to have happened, um, September ninth.
Of course I scrape it, I just don't like that truck.
Could be fog. The fog. Probably dense.
In the bone?
In the bone.
Probably pretty dense. September ninth, that was a big day. Did you pick my, that register?
No.
I brought mine all. The invoice for, um, Soulshine, that's.
You have the five dollar one?
Two three.
Well, there's one for five as well.
So the one for fifty isn't. Oh, there it is. Just half of the W's. Steve must be lining it up.
Does that check number not, by the way?
Come on. Seriously? Is it that way on the check registered file? Let's argue about later. Oh, I'm gonna put it in front of W.
I know it.
Wow. Everybody else is not dealing with this. Making it freezing and freezing. Is that still all right?
So Nathan, they really sent us a second invoice for five dollars?
No, it was, um.
What was that?
The original invoice was fifty-five.
Okay.
And it was, uh, a tax in the bottom of the invoice, so it was missed.
Okay.
And then it was separate, because we tried to call to figure out exactly what it was, but we hadn't.
So we don't know what kind of tax it was? Is that what you said?
It's a nine percent tax.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's from Maine, right?
No. It's Colby's. Colby's old place. I mean, uh, not the old place, it's Colby's car.
Car center, yeah.
So I questioned the five percent.
It's nine percent.
I mean, nine percent for five dollars. That's one of the separate.
Is there rental, is there a rental tax in the state of New Hampshire on, like, car rental? There's tax, isn't there?
That's on food, fast food.
But there's also, like, if you go to Enterprise, you're gonna pay a tax.
I don't know if there's a.
And did we get?
Looking out there.
Is this a new vendor?
I'm not sure if you use them in the past.
I make moves, because I've never even heard of these people.
You want to take it out of order and discuss it?
Oh, sorry.
Nine B.
Let's discuss it so we can clear the manifest, but we have to go into our regular meeting first, guys.
This is a regular meeting.
Oh, we haven't, we haven't gone into that. No, that's, sorry. Yeah, we can definitely discuss it. Take it out of order? Is that okay, Mr. Percy?
Sure.
Okay. Then, where are these people beaches? I've never even heard of them.
If you, if you go to the town beach, you have the police department, and then you have the garage to the right.
It's with Danny's.
That's cool. Isn't that Colby's Car Care?
It used to be. Colby's Car Care is still there, but then the building, the Key Day Rents, there's space in the front, and then.
So whose Soulshine rental?
It's, um, I believe it's, I believe it's, um, Sullivan's business. I don't believe.
They have like little.
I don't know who Sullivan is, so I guess.
Your family and.
And I don't quite, I mean, I don't, we have to, it's nothing to do with it, I just.
Just say property, I think, and say rental business, they have me out, it's out there, rent and trucks to rent and.
So the reason after telling the agenda is the legitimate legitimacy of renting a truck to begin with, right? And we had.
That's what he wanted to do on my agenda, yes.
When did, we said, at what point did we say it was gonna be okay to have a rental truck utilized?
We discussed it, don't we? We read, don't we?
Well, you took it out of order.
We took it out.
I'll pledge the pledge.
We're already. We're already, we're in a meeting, we can discuss it.
Yep.
Can I see the line that's coming out of?
We, we made a, uh, agreement that we wouldn't do this, but it didn't get to Joe.
In time?
The time.
Correct.
To, um, not do this. So that's why it happened.
So if I look, that meeting happened on the second meeting of September, or the first, was it the first meeting? Or the second meeting, we discussed it. I believe it was the first. And then we discussed it again, and we saw that there was.
Right. And I think what happened is, we discussed it when we had that conversation, then actually the night before? Or was it the next day? That you didn't reach Joe in time and a truck got rented?
It was discussed on a Wednesday night. Joe rented the truck early Friday morning of the holiday weekend. I let Joe know, I believe it was after, it was the Tuesday after Labor Day weekend. And I let Joan and Bob know that we utilize a dumpster, and he informed him that he already rented a truck.
So that won't happen again?
No. Been very clear, use a dumpster, so we're stockpiling, just as I said.
Stockpiling.
Yeah. Anything that doesn't fit in the dumpster, we're just stockpiling and not taking it anywhere.
How can you not fit in the dumpsters? They're pissing the back of a pickup truck, so you'd be able to fit in the dump. People broke down boxes, cardboard boxes, that don't get broke down, they might fit better.
Yeah, I believe, you know, because you asked for Joe to inventory that list, I believe there were what, seven-foot steel doors in there and so forth? That don't fit in the dumpster, and then waste management won't dump those, because they, they say it, it, um, bogs up the truck. So.
Where are the steel doors coming from?
Old doors, I'm not sure where.
So they, those were what came out of the basement? That, for that rental?
I don't know, Ralph.
Because when I was, when I was in the basement with Joe, what was down there, that beyond the three, dehumidifiers, was mostly cans of paint. So hopefully that's what he rented the truck for. Because I, I had asked what was taken, an inventory of what was taken to the transfer station, and there was vague items out of the basement, so.
No, there was a detailed list that was sent to all of you, via email. You asked for an inventory list, and Joe inventoryed it all.
Yeah, you did get.
It said large items out of the basement. Not large items, uh, paint cans, but there was a lot of paint cans, so.
Alright, so going forward, we're not renting anything without approval? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it depends on what that is, because you have a rental line.
Right.
You know, at five hundred dollars in a rental equipment line, or if we need to rent, say, a carpet scrubber, because ours broke down or something.
Well, no, we're talking about the truck.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Specific.
Or, you know, um.
That's fine.
I, I think, because that was, that was the conversation we all had that. I'm sorry about going.
No problem.
That was the conversation we had that meeting, that, so I think that going forward, you know, if they need to rent a truck?
I'll let you know.
Is that what you're?
Go, well, I was just, I was thinking, both of the dumpsters out there, they seem to be eight-yard dumpsters. So what if we were to get, um, like, one of those eight-yard dumpsters that can be closed and for food waste? And eliminate one eight-yard, but put it out of roll-off? That's like a twelve to fourteen-yard dumpster that, if it was construction debris or something like that, they pile everything into it, make sure that it doesn't get so close to the top that they can't hold the carts, and then they, they charge you the rental fee plus tonnage. Is that the way, I mean, paper goods and stuff like that, that'll add up tonnage pretty quickly, but.
I think what we could do is provide the board with options at this point. Um, my understanding of the two dumpsters that we have, one dumpster is strictly for recyclables, and then the other dumpster is for, um, regular garbage. And that, the one dumpster for garbage, uh, is, it fills up, and they dump it on Friday, I believe, or early Monday morning.
I think Monday.
It's a one, it's a one dump a week, and it only takes, right now, the, just the daily custodial routines fills that, fills that dumpster. So the options could be an additional dump, which is an additional cost. So what I can do is provide the board with the options as to how we wanna move forward, from this point forward. We know we're not taking anything to the dump.
Can, can we discuss the possibility of, can we ask that all of the cardboard boxes get broke down? Because they, when they're thrown in there and not broke down. I mean, I don't see turnkey coming up or waste management coming up and grabbing one dumpster at a time, and then leaving, driving away, leaving that second dumpster there. I think they grab them both at the same time. So reality is, we may be doing our part as, as a school district to try to recycle, and all ends up in the same heat, down the turnkey.
Right, but I think we, I'm sorry, just mention, I think if they have a cardboard dumpster, they pick it up separately than a regular, everyday garbage dumpster. We're recycling, they're not putting it in the same truck.
What I've witnessed is the cardboard and paper gets in with stuff out of the kitchen, so, I mean, it's not. It's not particularly, um, ones not specifically for paper and cardboard is, what I've witnessed is, both dumpsters are getting mixed results.
I guess moving forward, I just wanna make sure that the back of the school doesn't look like a dump. So if you can let us know, if, like, every couple weeks, what we have back there, if it's gonna be more cost-effective to rent a truck? Or to find out the cost of an extra dumpster, I mean, depending on the tonnage, it's can be anywhere from a hundred and fifty dollars to eight or nine hundred dollars a month, depending on what it is. I mean, even more than that for the school. I, you know, I'm basing that on what, I don't know that I pay. So I just, I don't wanna see it, I don't wanna see items out there that, one, can't be recycled because they're out in the weather. Or two, someone could get hurt if they were going out and about, or three, it could, like, if the paint's sitting up there, all lined up against the wall, that, that's just trashy looking, I don't want that, so.
I'll let you know next time that, if we'll.
If, if we're stockpiling out. If we're stockpiling out there now, I would bring two of the dumpster full, bring the extra pickup to get rid of it.
When weight build was vulnerable, they'd pick up for a hundred meters, twenty a ton.
I think we could just put together a proposal list, just so you know what your options are.
Put it.
And see what the board wants to do.
And I have a question as well, as long as you're on it. We're throwing away food waste, where are we putting it?
That goes in the garbage.
Into the regular garbage into the dumpster?
Yeah, we don't, uh, we don't have like a farmer, a pig farmer that comes and gets it, do we?
But there's a, there's a place down in Dover, Mr. Fox Composting, that you might wanna reach out to. And they take food waste from restaurants, schools, places like that. I mean, it might be something.
And they give you the containers to hold it in.
And they give you the containers.
Maybe they'll come to, I, we might have some company that has some of those wraps.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And answer your question, make sure it's a nine percent tax.
Nine percent tax on car rental?
Okay, so that's the, that's the tax, thank you, Jerry. All right.
I need that.
Rooms and reels.
I need that, yeah.
It's a service, right?
All seconded up. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
opposed? Opposed.
Minutes of the last meeting, September sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, public session. Do you want this one, too? Yes.
Page one correction on page one, and the manifest are due on approval. The school board members did not receive a financial report tonight due to this not being a financial meeting. I have a M O T.
Any other corrections? Make it a motion for three thirty minutes from November sixth sixteenth.
Make that motion.
I will second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Non-public minutes from September sixteenth.
I made the motion for three thirty, please.
I'm second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public comment?
Yes.
You were talking about, um, maybe renting an extra dumpster or other ways of disposing large items to rent a truck. Where are you, where are you gonna fund it in a budget, because I thought we had a very tight, slim budget. Where, where would those funds come from?
That's something we'll have to take a look at as soon as Mr. Tercy brings us back all the options. And then we'll have to figure it out.
We have a rental budget.
We do have a rental line of five hundred dollars as well. Yes, Mary?
Um, yes, I have a question for my granddaughter, Hallie. She's in the second grade. Um, she would like to, her and her friends would like to know why they have to sit with their class during lunch. Previously, they could sit with their friends, now they have to sit with their class. They wanna know why. Like no one has gotten in trouble or anything. They understand if they fool around, then they would have to sit, you know, in an assigned seat. But as of right now, they're not allowed to sit with their friends.
May I try?
Do you wanna do it, or you want Mr. Gregoire to do it?
I'd say it'd be a good conversation for Mr. Gregoire to give Ms. Collins a call and explain that.
You can, or you wanna wait for Mr. Gregoire to give you a call?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Gregoire will call you and give you the information.
Okay. I'll also.
Maybe other parents will know, too.
They also would like to know why the grilled cheese sandwiches are not grilled.
Would I have to flame water boil?
I, I think they're baked, but apparently they're, they're not getting like, you know, a good crust on it, so.
They're not Grammys?
No.
Yeah, see, I can't do it. Grilled cheese has to be grilled.
Makes a difference.
Yeah, it makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
We can, Mr. Gregoire, find that out, please.
I will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
I was just gonna, it seemed like Jerry had an answer for the first question and I, I didn't know if you were ready to offer an answer for that or, I mean, no one seemed as if you were ready to answer.
I can, I mean, it's fine, it's fine. It's, really, it's about organization, the school, they come in as a class, they sit down. They're quiet, we, we just line up kids. Part of my idea is to not let kids stand in a big line of three grade levels. We have one big line where kids are pushing and shoving, caught sitting at the table while waiting in line. So that, once the line gets two or three deep, left in the line, putting on the table, they're, so they're not pushing and shoving. It just makes it pretty easier, smoother. I mean, I don't know if they've ever, we were sitting with friends last year, that I'm not aware of. Excuse me, what they're aware of, my, what I've always seen is they've always been sitting with their classroom, especially at that grade level. Typically, you know, seventh and eighth grade, they come in, they sit down where they want, that's seventh and eighth grade. Thank you.
Good question, thanks, Mary.
You should save the anticipation.
I can still call you.
With any more clarification? Administration Financial Reports, Nathan.
Hello. I have, um, up first as usual, the expense report through September. Is there any questions on the expense report?
I don't, but I have a question on, um, maybe I'm jumping in? Probably. You sent us an email and answered some questions from the meeting the other night.
Okay.
And I just have a question on the fees the banks are charging us. You add that up, that's a monthly fee, a hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and we're paying that a year.
That's not a month, it's a quarter.
Okay, but still, that's a, a lot of money, but fees. And I think that maybe somebody should reach out to the bank or maybe reach out to a different bank, because I know a lot of banks do not charge fees now, so I don't know why. I don't pay fees for anything, and a lot of businesses don't pay fees.
And also, you said about, we pay the debt fees. Aren't we kicking those back to the people who?
We do, but the, um, the bank charges us and we get reimbursed from the.
Client.
The client who, um, does the checking in the first place.
But we are being reimbursed?
Yes, yeah.
That is happening.
Yes.
Yes, I, I mean, I just think that's expensive for fees, especially for a business or a school. So somebody needs to reach out to the bank and say, no, wait a minute, let's renegotiate this, because that's, that's ridiculous.
Mr. Fogg?
On the school board appropriations, legal lines, legal services, are we actually at zero balance out of that forty-five thousand?
No.
Are we as an appropriator?
Nope. The reporting period is, uh, that's for the whole year so far. It's the sixty-nine, uh, forty-two, but we've encumbered the full amount. See, the encumbrance is the thirty-eight oh fifty-eight.
Prior to the encumbrance, where does the money sit? In the bank? And the longer it sits in the bank, the more interest it accrues? So it's logical to encumber it before we need to spend it?
Well, encumbering means it's just accounted for. That helps us determine the bottom line and how, how close we are to, um, actual monies at the end of the year.
So even though it says zero on the paper, it's really still in the bank accruing interest?
Yes, correct. The encumbered amount, the thirty-eight thousand. When this is reporting period, that's how much you'd actually spend.
But the last column over says a monthly remaining and it's all zeros, so I mean, I just, I guess that inspires a question to find out why it's not in the bank. But I understand. I think I understand it, until next meeting.
And then he'll ask the question again.
Well, if you see, Ralph, go to, um, first page of the expense report under regular education. We should actually be encumbering the full amount for tuition public. See that two million, two point three million?
Yeah.
So we, we would wanna encumber that, knowing that we already, we have that expense. However, those, those monies would still be in the bank collecting interest. But it shows zero around this line because we encumbered that full amount. Because we know we're gonna get billed by Spalding. So it's similar.
It is similar, but I mean, the difference is, one's still in the amount remaining column and the other one isn't. So I mean, that's what made me ask the question. It's not, it's no longer remaining and, you know, my, it's just a way of thinking, I guess. It's no longer gaining interest. It is.
You didn't take it out and put it in the address, right? Can I just check it?
How about like teachers' health insurance, why is that down? Third line down.
That's, there could have been change in plans. Remember, we can't, anytime from July first, there's a open enrollment period, a teacher can change their plan during that time or even mid-year if there's a circumstance that causes a change of plan. So that's, we estimate what that cost is gonna be going in the building, the budget, but that doesn't mean you can't change from July first.
And how about like special ed student is?
That's because we did not anticipate hiring an ABA tutor. So we had a student who came and had required that. So it's an additional position that we didn't anticipate during the budget building process.
Others say always?
Now, when I'm not sure of what to look into, that was.
Changes in staff, replacements.
Summer school, this was for this past July, August.
Yep.
Why is the number different this expense report than it was from last? Last expense report, it was six thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-three cents short. And now it's fifty-seven seventy-sixty-eight short.
Could have been an adjustment made. It could have been, um, a payment out of that line that should have come out of another line. And there was adjustment made.
So by pulling it out of a line item, encumbering it, that allows you to shift indirectly where you need it to? If it stayed in the amount remaining in the line, it would still be designated for that specific purpose. Is that correct?
No, it doesn't matter what if you encumber it or not. Shifting monies between object codes. You still look at the total number that was, that's in that each object, object code. So encumbrance just shows that you accounted for those monies.
I mean, I have a hard time with the legal line being completely encumbered. If, if only sixty-nine hundred is actually spent and there's a forty-five thousand dollar appropriation.
Well, there's nothing wrong with encumbering it, so you can see the shifts in that line.
And it just, somebody who's not gaining this information here tonight, who may have access to, you know, who have the right to know, uh, who's staff may look at that and say, they've already spent forty-five thousand dollars. It's, it's. Is it, is it best practice to encumber all of that money, really?
It helps us, um, keep a closer eye on the bottom line.
How does it help us keep a closer eye on the bottom line?
I would, I would say that on the, on the legal fees, we could unencumber those monies because that gives us an idea as to what, um, what we have remaining in that as invoices come in. But things such as what I consider uncontrollable costs, like salaries and benefits and tuition, we should encumber. So we can unencumber those monies so you can keep an eye on what that, what's up with that line.
I'm not genuinely concerned about the whole thing, but if you're saying it's the best practice to take the money completely out, you know, I'm not, I, I won't question a whole lot of that.
The money's not taken out, it's still in the account, it's just showing that it's gonna be utilized for the, what the budget asked for to be utilized for. So it's still in the account, it's still drawing interest.
It doesn't go anywhere.
It doesn't go anywhere, it's still in the same account, it's just on a different line on your spreadsheet.
Correct.
The, the difference being, in, what are you looking for, Ralph, is what's the amount remaining for each expense report, correct? Month to month?
It just, it concerns me when I see all these parentheses and, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in these parentheses. And, you know, I understand it's a bottom line budget and I understand you can shift and shimmy, but, but, you know, if you have a line.
Well, the governing body. The governing body has, right, by our side.
And I guess that's the, the real concern is, is we're, we're supposed to be on the ball and accountable. We should be held accountable, but if we see all these zeros, it's out of our control. And, and I'm not saying we need to have complete control, but we need to have knowledge. Knowledge is different than control. We don't, I mean, I, I'm just not a par for the course kinda guy, I guess.
Any other questions?
Special ed fiker, Richard, did we, did you recalculate those, Nathan? The fiker and the retirement, to make sure we have the proper percentages?
It gets, uh, every time there's a change, it gets recalculated automatically. So like special ed, other salaries was adjusted. In this instance, last month, the ABA tutor was in that line incorrectly, so we moved it to where it was supposed to be. So just by moving that, um, salary to the correct line, it automatically adjusts the other lines.
But I mean, we, there was a question as to whether the, the fiker and the retirement were at the correct percentages?
Yep.
Have you recalculated those to make sure that we're taking out the proper percentages?
We've always taken out the proper percentages. Just when we budget it, we budget it at the, um, the salary amount, but not all salaries are taxed. Which means they don't, well, not all, not the full percentage of the salary, the gross salary is taxed because of, uh, the medical insurance and stuff like that. Any other questions on the expense report? Okay. The, uh, next report is the revenue report, and that's through September as well. And then we have the grant overview for, uh, September.
Michael, what question do I need to answer? Remember, we had the conversation, we had one of the grants that was short and we were waiting for an amount on the second. Yeah, did we ever get the amount?
Yes.
Okay, and did we share it? I don't remember. Was it, it was enough for?
For what our total allocation was?
Yeah.
The total allocation was around fifty-nine thousand.
Okay.
But we could only spend up to eighty-eight thousand, it was off, yeah.
Okay.
Eighty-two, thirty-six, forty-six?
Sounds about right, yeah.
It's good it's not in parentheses, I picked it up. It's a game, get away from it.
Okay. Any questions on the grant overview? All right?
I also have the treasurer's report and the reconciliation of the general fund.
What's, what's the charge back on here? The one on the bottom, is this a return check? Did we get that fixed?
Yes.
Okay.
Are they paying the difference? Are they paying our bank fees?
They do, yes.
Okay.
That's that, yeah.
Okay. That's a little alarming, I didn't see that.
That's a check arrow.
It was, yeah.
We need a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Oh, that's right, we need a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll make that motion.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last report I have for this evening is the negative balance report as of October first.
Can you explain what the eligibility is to me?
Yes. It's a code for paid, reduced, or free. A is free, B is reduced, C is paid.
Okay, so if A is paid, why is it even on here?
The system were, we've had some trouble with the system. The operating system wasn't running right because Microsoft didn't do Windows seven anymore. So we had to upgrade the system and we're fixing the issues now.
So, because this is going to be a heck of a lot more money, that half, more than half of this is free. So that will, so this is nothing, this, we avoid this?
So you're going to bring us back a, a clean one?
Yeah, next one, I'll have, I'll have more accurate numbers.
Go ahead.
Can you confirm to me, what's the process for finding out if they're pre-reduced or paid for price?
We get the application and from, from the parent or guardian, it's entered into the system. And then right away, it's, it's registered as either free, paid, or reduced.
Okay, and which office does that? Is it Bryan? Is it you?
No, it's the SAU.
Okay, and what do parents do when they believe that they get free lunch? Say they have four kids in their family and two are getting free lunch and the other two are paying full price?
That was part of the glitch that we had, that we're looking into.
Okay, so are you reconfirming everybody that you put in?
Every single application we're going through, yes.
Okay.
Ralph?
So when you, when they consider the eligibility, if my two daughters and their eight kids came and lived with me, then I would certainly apply for free and reduced lunches. Would they still, would they consider just my daughter's incomes or would they consider my income as well on, on that ability?
I believe that they do a household income.
They do a household income.
So would include you, yes.
Not, they still wouldn't be out.
You have two daughters and eight kids?
Eight grandkids.
Do I get to all come over there? So we'll get an updated, corrected?
Could be a scenario.
Okay, thank you. Your turn.
All right. In your packet, you have your enrollment numbers as of September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. See at the Paul School, pre-K to eight, four hundred and forty-four students. At Spalding, grades nine through twelve, we have one hundred and sixty-two students. Kingswood, we have seventeen, gives a total of six hundred twenty-three students.
Up from last year, is it?
Mm-hmm. Particularly at Paul School.
By how much?
I believe around four twenty last year, four twenty-three, somewhere in there. Have you seen any increase in enrollment at Paul?
I've heard, you know, how the towns around the state have been rated, rated and stuff, and I'm sad to hear that Wakefield's giving them kind of a lower rating, like in the lower eight towns or something. Is it just the education program that Wakefield provides to students that, that is drawing families here? And it doesn't seem to be a whole lot of new homes going, building and stuff like that. It is, can you tell me what's particularly nice about Wakefield's education program that seems to be attracting families?
Well, we, we definitely run a great program here. However, there's other reasons why people wouldn't want to move into Wakefield. So we're not, we haven't done really any studies on what's the migration trend in or out of Wakefield. I'm not sure if the town has either, and the reasons why. I think obviously families have different reasons to why they might move in or move out. I'm not familiar with the migration trend analysis for the town itself. But it is interesting that we've seen an increase in enrollment at Paul School, where else would we have seen a decrease in enrollment?
Is it? I'm not sure if my question...
Then you can also see the residency form numbers there. We still have several residency forms that we need to obtain for high school. That's, that's a little, it's close to fifty percent that we've received at this point. I'll be sending letters out to these families, reminding them of the requirement.
When are you doing that?
I'm waiting on the list from Spalding, so as soon as I get the actual list of students, the updated list, then the letters will be going out.
And what are we doing at Paul School?
I'm looking at using our alert now to do a target each individual, work on that too.
How long are you going to try that until you try something different?
Uh, probably just give it one or two cycles, once they build the group, once they build a group, we'll just, they'll, now the Blackboard, board system, we'll send that out.
And when are you going to?
Well, since they've slowed down, now they've slowed down, probably, I would imagine, probably try to, you know, teach a workshop or something.
Well, do you know about new children, Mr. Thompson?
I couldn't tell you what the rate is. Looking at, looking at the list, there's certainly a lot of million names.
If you're a new child registering, you have to come in with residency to get enrolled.
Right.
Okay. New business, Michael, proposed budget?
Yep, so in your, everyone receiving your packet, the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen proposed budget. I'm wondering if people had an opportunity to look over that budget, I'll just hit some highlights with you before we start looking at it more closely. Keep in mind that the proposed budget excludes all warrant articles as well as the SAU expense. There aren't salary increases for teachers in this proposed budget because we're currently in negotiations with the, with the association. So we don't include those because those come in as a separate article. All non-affiliated staff, their salaries are based on a two percent increase. Health insurance, we call our health insurance provider, keep in mind the rates haven't come to us yet, sometimes they come late in the game. They recommended a ten percent to, in your proposed budget, a ten percent increase. So we have that in there. Retirement rate did not change between last year and this year. It's fifteen point six seven percent for teachers and eleven point one seven percent for support staff. We base workman's comp on a two-year actual average plus five percent. Did the same with unemployment, two-year actual average plus five percent. And property liability and auto, auto insurance, we base it on this current year's amount, fiscal year sixteen amount, plus five percent. And then one thing I wanted to make sure I noted in here is you'll see the line that's titled transfer of grant expenditures. That's the one hundred five two two fifty-nine one hundred line. That's what shows our federal grant, our anticipated federal grant expenditures of three hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars. That includes your Title I A money, your Title II A money, and your IDA money. And IDA is in this, in Wakefield's proposed budget because we're moving it from a consolidated grant at the SAU level to a Wakefield IDA and a Milton IDA. So those monies will not be part of an SAU gross budget expenditure. And keep in mind that that three hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars will be offset by those grant revenues. So that, that was zero out. So what I just want to highlight is, if you look at the back page, your bottom line, what you see in there is your grand total for FY seventeen budgeted is nine million eighty thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. Now, keep, keep in mind that out of that nine million, that'll be offset by revenues of three hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars, which puts you at a budget of eight million seven hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. The difference between that budget, proposed budget for FY seventeen, and what our current FY sixteen budget is a difference of seventy-five thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty cents, which shows a point eight seven percent increase over this current school year's budget.
Ralph?
Just a couple things, we're not going to be considering this conversation.
Tonight, no.
No.
No, it's just for everybody in the house.
All right, and the warrant article that's going to ask to raise and appropriate certain funds is going to, like last year, show the total operating budget to be raised and appropriated. And then there's going to be something in that article that says this shall be offset in that amount, three hundred sixteen nine ninety-one. Does it say pending receiving federal grants or guaranteed federal grants? How does that, how does that?
Now, what, the wording that we will be bringing forward, this isn't the exact wording, but it'll seem, it'll be similar to this, is that three hundred sixteen, you know, that total operating budget will be offset by three hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars of federal grant revenue.
Anticipating.
And the, yes, and the remainder, which is that eight million seven, eight point seven million dollars is what is raised by local taxes.
So you should be prepared for that, right?
Yep.
Right.
You'll see it in the article.
Steve?
Then why was this tonight in our second meeting of the month as part of the budget schedule? When, when are we going to meet to go over this budget?
In the past, we've used actual scheduled board meetings and then we've scheduled workshops if necessary to go over the budget. So we could, we could schedule additional workshops, tonight it's being presented to you, just to ask for your review, and then we can dig deeper in future meetings.
And that, yeah, it's going to put on the next, the next meeting, Steve, so we can devote time to it. Do you want us?
But there's, there's not enough time on a regular board meeting.
No, there's not, so we can schedule additional meetings for that, workshops for that.
And when are those going to happen? Because we, I don't, I didn't have my schedule, but we meet with the budget committee what?
Soon.
Soon.
Thursday?
No.
No, beginning on November.
What's next Thursday?
What's next Thursday?
Next Thursday is the SAU.
The SAU joint.
But that's for budget, for them.
November first.
November third?
Yes. So we can set up a couple budget workshops now if you guys want, or we can do it at the next meeting, it's totally up to everybody here. Go.
I would like to do it now, just so I could plan.
Okay.
I have a hectic schedule, and do you want our questions beforehand so that you can come prepared?
That would be great.
That would be great.
Now, we're not supposed to do intercommunication, will you, if I send you?
If you send me your questions, I'll come back to the board.
You'll push out the information to everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
So if you have questions, I'll send that out to the board, the responses, or it'll be addressed at the meeting.
Okay, so what's everybody's schedule looking like and who?
I'll be checking my smartphone.
Can anybody be here, can anybody be here on the fifteenth earlier than six?
I can be here at five.
Eight days from now?
We have a board, we have a joint board meeting here anyway at six?
You have your information, so give each other a look at it. Yeah? It's a Thursday?
It's a Tuesday, the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute. Thursday, until the one o'clock.
Not too much. I should do it at five. Yeah?
Five. Budget work session?
On the fifteenth?
Yep.
They come home with it.
So that's why I said you jumped already?
Yep.
Is that right?
Yep.
So five o'clock will be budget work session and then joint board is at six.
Okay. You want to schedule one more?
Yeah.
Yeah, same thing. Did you?
Yeah.
Maybe not.
Although I don't, you know, I mean, in the past, we've spent a couple of meetings, like three hours a meeting going over. I mean, I just don't like the idea, you know.
We'll have that time on the twenty ninth, I think, there's nothing else going on.
There's a six P M. meeting at Newt, so we'd all meet at Newt at five rather than six.
On the twenty ninth?
On the twenty ninth, and then we can go from there and we can schedule a bulk meeting, Steve, if, you know, and we know, I'll know.
Because we need to go over this and just kind of skim it, I mean, you really need to go over it line by line.
Recommendation.
Go.
So we start the budget work session at five, we go into the SAU joint board meeting, we go over the joint board, go over the joint budget, and then we reconvene as a Wakefield board. So after the joint board meeting, we reconvene as a Wakefield board and continue hammering out the budget.
We could do that.
We could do it next week here.
Next week here?
Yeah.
I'd rather do that on the fifteenth than the twenty ninth.
And then we'll all look at our schedules again on the twenty ninth and hammer out another few hours that we can go line by line.
So we're not going to do the five o'clock on the twenty ninth?
No, we're going to do the five o'clock, go to the six o'clock, and then come back into the five o'clock.
No, I mean, on the twenty ninth.
Yeah, we're still going to do the five o'clock on the twenty ninth, but then we're going to schedule another block so we can go over it some more.
So what, right now, we got the fifteenth and the twenty nine? So what, right now, we got the 15th and the 29th at 5 o'clock?
Yes.
And the 15th, let's plan on staying after the joint board.
Does it take a double posting or just only a single posting both times?
Single posting.
Both times, no pay.
Well, we'll post both meetings, but the one on the 15th, we'll just take that, starts at 5:00, we'll reconvene after.
Okay.
When do you want our questions by so you can be prepared to answer?
Soon as possible.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Snow removal, care of grounds, RFP. Uncle?
We go back for one second?
We can.
Um, just, just so you know, that whatever we do on the 29th, the meeting of the 29th, I have to get the budget out to the budget committee the day after. So if they have some time, we'll send that electronically and make it available, but I have to get that to the budget committee right after that meeting. So just so you know.
Okay.
So hopefully we can, because they're going to need time to review it prior to our first meeting, which is the next week.
It's not going to give us much time.
It's not going to give us a whole lot of time, though.
No.
I'm saying that our first meeting with the budget committee is scheduled November 3rd. Therefore, I have to have a budget in their hands prior to that meeting.
So let's hope on the 15th we can get most of it hammered out and then touch base on it again and...
That's all right. Don't be sorry.
Ralph?
We'll be able to discuss it again on the 21st, right?
At our next meeting, yeah.
Is, is there a chance that instead of the 29th, you could bump that up to the 22nd for, for the purpose of not, for the purpose of having everything hammered out closer to the 29th?
What's everybody's schedules look like?
That kind of, if things fall apart on the 29th, you have a deadline, you know, it's kind of...
We're going to spend a lot of time at that meeting for the 21st as well going over this, too, so. But what's everybody's schedule for the 22nd look like?
I agree with you.
We don't provide that. Can you meet at 6:30?
I can see that John will watch the video.
So the 21st, though, the 21st, if we keep a clean agenda and just have the budget on the 21st agenda, that dedicates that whole school board meeting to the budget.
But what if we have other things we need to discuss that?
Right, we just should set, let's set this meeting just in case, please.
Yeah, I'll do the 22nd, and I can do the 5:00 if that happens.
5:00?
And not the 29th?
No, and the 29th if we need it.
If needed.
So we're going to play it by ear.
We might be able to hammer it all out on the 22nd, which would be great.
How about the 15th?
We're doing the 15th. Oh, if wishes were horses. All right.
Wish it were horses, there'd be a lot of crap on the line.
Okay, wish we were horses. Michael, you good?
I'm good, just got that last date in there. Yep.
All right.
All right, so in your, in your packet, you also, we need to go back out the bid for snow removal and care of grounds. That contract is up at the end of this month. So bringing the RFP in front of you, and this is the, what you have in front of you is the scaled-down version from what we used to send out. And just looking for the board to approve the RFP so that we can post it and get this back to you.
Go ahead, Steve.
I didn't, um, we had the swimming pool separated for the winterization, and I don't see that as being separated out of this one. Is there a reason for that?
What? What are you talking about?
You have two separate contracts, one's the snow removal only.
What's swimming pool?
Well, the swimming pool.
Oh, the roof. It's fun on the roof. We are a swimming pool.
Yes, we do. Have you seen it? It's a swimming pool.
Mr. Adams?
Yes, what Steve's saying is on page five, what we should have is the exception when we have to shovel the roof off, there's a separate line in there. So you have the seasonal price for normal snow shoveling, plus the mowing and all of the maintenance, so it would be year-round, there'd be the, the normal work.
Okay.
And then the exception is on a will call, which is shoveling off the roof. So there should be two lines there on page five.
Okay.
But there isn't, correct?
Correct, correct.
So, but we can, we're going to put it back in, we're going to separate the swimming pools.
Right.
To have that as a separate job.
Yeah, we could do that. Under contract, that's the way it would be broken out, and we can make it clearer by saying that on page five.
But because sometimes we just need to shovel that.
Yep.
We don't need to shovel the entire roof.
That's correct.
Is it possible to, instead of waiting till there's a foot of snow on the roof, I mean, a lot of times, the foot will accumulate, it'll start to melt, and it becomes ice, which is really difficult to clean. Is it possible to have something like after every storm where it just gets cleaned off, whether it's three inches or three feet? You know, I mean, to me, the heat goes up through the roof, it's melting the snow, it's causing a lot of ice, and the ice has been the problem, right? Seems to be the problem.
It's been, the total load of it is what ends up being...
Ice is heavier than snow.
Right. And if you have wet snow and so forth, correct.
So would it be a wise thing to do to, to set up this contract so that after every storm it gets shoveled off? I mean, if there's no snow, there's no melting snow, no ice.
Yeah, they're going to charge us per storm.
Yeah, you want to shovel this whole entire roof after every...
I'd rather have that than all of a sudden an emergency meeting.
Well, then you probably, we should probably change the budget right now from $9 million to $10 million.
I'd rather, I'd rather have the snow and ice removed than have it accumulate and become an emergency situation.
Just, I'm going to ask the question, and I probably know the answer. Do our, our maintenance people shovel the roof from time to time? We don't always call in contractor. You guys do it, right?
No, we don't.
No, you don't do it, okay?
No, we don't.
I don't shovel either, I don't blame you.
Am I making a point? Is there no conceptual, can you see what I'm saying?
I can see what you're saying, but I can only see the cost involved, and if they don't feel that, if, they don't feel that it's, it's dangerous, I, I mean...
Well, if we're paying by the hour, it wouldn't take that long to move three to four inches of snow. It, it takes a lot longer to move two feet of ice than it takes, uh, a month. But I would like it, maybe we could just throw that option in there for the competitive bidders to chew on. You know, maybe, you know, maybe they'll say, hey, every storm I'll come out for $100 a guy.
Okay, you know, we can throw, we can, it doesn't necessarily have to be part of the contract, Steve, but we can throw it as an option and see what the difference in the cost is. Go ahead.
I see in here, you, I don't know if it's a wise idea where two plus two equals five, to allow the contractor to decide when to shovel it off.
They're not. No, that's my call.
Well, it says bidder is responsible for their own measurements.
Oh, in order to put the bid together.
Oh, you're not, you're not referring, they're going to decide when it's going to be shoveled off?
No.
They're not going to take, they're not going to be making the measurements for when the shoveling will, that'll be still you and Joe? And you, you guys will make that call every day?
Right.
I took, I thought it was that you were going to allow them to decide on the shovel.
Right, because we have, we have a, we have a metal tube that we use, so we can actually literally melt the snow to understand the water content, too, to have some judgment call. Because last year, if you remember, the only wet snow we got was a little wimpy storm at the end of the season. All of the rest, you know, was all powder. So we, you know, so we were hedging, understanding the weight of it because it's different with the different water content.
Can you clarify what you're going to put in that, that line for what, page five?
Oh.
Please.
It would be, it would be, it would be the maximum price would be for normal care of grounds. So that's all you went to work, all your summer work. And then the second line would be specific to roof shoveling.
Okay. Can you, what are you going to kind of say, just so I can read it down?
Can you amend that and present it to us at the next meeting?
No, no. So do you have wording for that, Bob?
Shouldn't that be on page six, actually, Bob? That you're saying, but my, looks like it would be part of page six or page seven thing.
It would be O, right?
O.
O and then P. So O would be maximum price for normal care of grounds, and then P would be, what else are you inserting?
For the shoveling?
For roof shoveling.
And that's based on what?
The roof shoveling is on a will call basis.
Will call.
Okay.
Unless we ask for a proactive price as opposed to a reactive price, right?
Right, and you're still discussing that, right?
And should there be a, a queue for the swimming pool to separate those two shoveling jobs? Because that's how we, we broke that out, because then we saved a lot of money doing it that way.
When we only shoveled that piece.
Correct. Instead of getting one price and they're only shoveling the, the swimming pool, but they're charging us to do the entire building.
Right.
So it's a shoveling of what section? Section F? Ralph? Is that right?
Yeah, separate section F out.
And, and that is the most...
Yeah, it's F and A combined, not all of A.
Right. F and A, A is...
Is it the whole perimeter of A or just a section of it?
It's, it's the perimeter of F that...
Touches A.
That faces the field, those three sides.
Okay, so three, okay.
Mr. Bob?
Which is the same area that always seems to be the emergency situation, right? That is, it seems to be, that seems to be the one that causes the most concern when the ice and snow is built up towards a certain point.
Right. Because the winds are predominant that way, so they tend to blow into F, right? From the field, right?
Guys, have any other changes?
So yes, towards these, Draken, F versus A and F, right?
Right, so we'll put a queue for A and F?
Sure.
Any other corrections, guys? Do we need a motion on this, Mr. Tracy, to send this out?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to have amendments made and place this up too big in the, in the regular spots to place it.
Second that.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Um, does it make sense to combine them? Because there may be some people who might do landscape groundwork but don't want to do anything with snow removal and vice versa. There may be people out there who may be interested in snow, taking care of, shoveling the roof, but may, may not be interested in doing the landscaping. Combine, if you combine the two of them in one bid, you might be cutting down the potential of, of the number of bidders.
That's a very good point.
So maybe, maybe we should break this out into two bids, because I think you might get more people. Because not everyone may not want to, some people might want to take the winter off, they'll do landscaping, but they don't want to be up on a roof shoveling. And therefore, they wouldn't be able to put a bid in if they didn't want to do both, both sides of the way this bid is written out.
Okay. To the board?
Can I throw my, good.
Throw my motion?
Steve, it's got a new motion.
All of that stuff we just did is...
Can we get a motion to split it out? Into two bids?
But doesn't it need to go out, we could just split?
Yeah, but they can amend this proposal.
Yeah, the format of the RFP.
It's still, it's just going to split it up into two. That's what you're looking for, correct, Steve?
Right. Just one says lawn care landscaping, the other one says winter grounds.
Thank you. Do you want to make a motion on that, please? Okay. Can I, I'd like to make a motion to split the RFP into two. One is for lawn care, A care of grounds, and one is for the snow removal bid.
For ground and roofs.
Grounds and what, Steve?
And roofs.
And roofs, okay, sorry.
But the snow removal is...
For grounds and roofs on the snow removal. Can I get a second?
I'll second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Paul, any questions?
Go ahead, Bob.
Did you want both RFPs put out at this time? I just wanted clarification.
Yes, please. Our old business, the RFP for mechanical services.
I didn't get that, did you?
I didn't either.
There wasn't, it was...
It wasn't, we didn't send out...
To bring it back to this agenda, there wasn't any...
Right, we just wanted to have the discussion. Ralph, you had asked for this.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to be more than a $3,000 in the, in, you know, expense of more than $3,000, and certainly, it's something that there's able-bodied contractors out there to provide bids on, so I think, much like this one, if we could create an RFP and, and get it out there so that the, the school year doesn't go by, and we, competitive bidding is to save the taxpayers' money. Without it, we're not saving, we, we don't even know where we could save, so I think it's a great idea to put that.
Okay, what are we talking, what do you want to send out?
Um, well, it would be boiler maintenance, right? It would be facilities, facilities maintenance, whether it's in toilet or water pumps, and mechanical to me is anything that's, that's pushing water or steam or...
And I think we talked about this before, Mr. Adams. We said, is there any way you can get some bids for, say, a contract on our boiler system, that type of stuff? Was there any way you could reach out and try to get some bids for that? Or put together an RFP for that? You know, this guy could try just to come in and get everything up and running for the season, to come in and do our annual service. I'm sure we get annual service done on our boiler system, yes?
We do.
Um, you know, and then maybe a, a contract to say, hey, the heat broke down, you know, that type of thing. I know we talked about this, did that ever go anywhere?
No.
Okay.
No, we had, we had, we had based the way he and Joe and I had in the discussion about what we had paid previously.
Mm-hmm.
And then we ended up hooking up with a local contractor And then we ended up hooking up with a local contractor that we've discussed probably a couple of times here.
Right.
And, you know, prices were very similar to that. When I had looked at other, other bidding in Milton as an example, the bigger contract, contractors tended to be higher for the, all the rate chargers. So, it certainly won't hurt to follow, you know, Ralph's idea and flush things out and see what we get out of that. I just need a little bit of help on, I think, Ralph, from what you were saying, that we'd want to look at the regular PM work that we do. And then look at what the will call rates would be. Understand the response to a will call, you know, how, how long it would be. And look at what the different costs would be on shift, off shift. Because sometimes we need some work done sooner than later. And as an example, where we have a teacher workshop on Friday here, we could schedule something that couldn't be done while children were here on this Friday. But if we had something else that had to be done sooner than later, we'd have to look at getting that done nights or Saturday or something like that, so we'd have to, wanna understand those rates too. So I could scratch something together. What kind of timeline did you wanna look at? With all the work I know you'd be putting in in the budget season to, to, to start working your way through that.
Well, I mean, if you, if you had something together for our next meeting, that'd be good, but one of the things that I'm thinking about is there's a difference on one side of the building with the number two, the, the home heating oil burner. And there's, you know, the LP burner. And it doesn't seem as though we, we had the gas burners serviced last year. It seemed like it was, we had one bill regarding the oil burner. And it was, it was pretty close to what our minimum expense is supposed to be, you know, or requires a bidding process. So, as far as the scope, you know what, you've got a good idea of all of the mechanical devices inside the building. And, you know, so that would probably be something in the RFP. You know, we have two gas burners, we have an oil burner, we have, I'm gonna say, 12,000 feet of copper pipe that needs to be, you know, there, needs, needs to be, I don't think anything needs to be blooded out or anything like that, but there's certainly a heating issue on the old side of the building. Can't go, so...
Sort of like a contract, give us, give us rates.
I mean, if, if somebody...
That's what I'm looking for, is give me a rate, are you gonna charge me $45 an hour every single visit? Come out here, is the next guy gonna charge me 75? Like a contract, for a maintenance contract, for the normal things that you guys would normally call somebody out here. We could put it in our RFP, send it out, and let one person or six people or whatever bid on it and maybe save a little bit of money there.
Or maybe save a lot of money. You know, I mean, it could be, one guy says, I can't do the number two stuff, the oil burner, but I can certainly do the gas and the fittings and all of that stuff, and he has a price for that, you know, just, and the next guy, the next competitive bid down the line could say, well, I could do both, but this price for LP fittings and all that stuff is cheaper, so I'll just worry about the number two, the boiler down there. Who knows?
Exactly.
We can't, we can't compare prices without a competitive bid process. So we need the process to...
We could take an advantage of with the PM on that oil burner, I'd say.
Is that enough information?
Yes.
Mr. Adams, so you can get something together for us by the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, what I can do is I can start showing out what we would normally have in our appendices just to start getting a feel for the content of it all.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, any comments?
I, I have one.
Go.
I got an email today from the Department of Education, just making sure that we are on for the state board meeting, the withdrawal plan. Will go to the state board on October 19. It's on the state board agenda, I believe, at 10:30 at Unity Elementary School. So I got that confirmation this afternoon.
And we have people to go with, it's also tomorrow.
I let the chair of the committee know this afternoon.
Great.
Bob, Sue's gonna let the vice chair know that's gonna end up going as well. I'll be there.
10:19 or 10:30?
Yeah, 10:19, 10:30. Unity Elementary School.
And everybody here is, is welcome to go, right?
It's a public meeting, so anybody can go.
Where is Unity Elementary?
Unity is west of Keene.
Bailey.
And southeast of Claremont, it's near Newport. It's a, gonna be a good two-hour-plus drive from Wakefield.
Why is it held there?
Uh, because the state board is actually meeting at Unity because they've been contending with a, a topic at Unity that involves Unity, so they are moving their board meeting to Unity for that, at that meeting specifically. So we'll be, we'll be traveling to Unity that morning.
You can... Did all of you receive the New Hampshire School Board Association? It was an announcement of the health insurance annual meeting?
I posted yesterday.
Yep.
Yes.
I didn't see it.
Because you knew the date. I guess my question is, did you see that at all? It, it's the annual meeting held at the government center, and it's for the healthcare. Is that where we can go and find out about the catalyze plans and how things are going, or is that just their annual meeting for that?
Oh, they have a workshop regarding the health plan.
Annual meeting.
I'm not sure, I'll have to look at it.
Okay, could you look at that and just see if, like, where the negotiating team, would, if it would be in the best interest for us to go and find out all those numbers and stuff, I know that they have...
That was put out by the school board association?
Yep.
Yes.
I received it yesterday.
Yeah, we were just, um, there's another thing we were gonna add during the next meeting, the negotiation.
Oh, yep, I...
We're gonna, but that's gonna create a problem, though, because we were gonna try to keep a clean agenda, but we need to, that's gonna...
We could put that in.
Oh, it takes...
That'll be a non-public anyway, so we have to put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
That'll be one non-public item.
Okay. And should we just say that we have five meetings set up for that, and let them know that? Should the rest of the board know that we have five meetings set up for that? Between now and the 10th of November?
Okay.
I'm sorry, is that, that date, that's October 19, you said?
October 19.
October.
10:30 in the morning. Just on that note, I want the board to also know that John T. from Upton-Hatfield will be representing the Wakefield board, not Barbara Loman. So that was a, that attorney was recommended by Barbara to, to represent Wakefield. So John will be there, I've worked with John in the past. And he'll be there to answer any questions regarding the RSA in general, if the state board asks that. It's not a matter of the plan itself, he's reviewed the plan, he said it looks great, just like Barbara did. And if it made it onto the state board agenda, that means that the state board attorney has reviewed it and
Question.
Put it on the agenda, so looks like I'm anticipating smooth sailing.
Great.
But then again, you never know, but from what I've heard so far, it should go well.
Yes.
When's the last time that legal lines were put out for a bid? I mean, not that it has to go out for a bid, but I was just asking, has it been quite a while?
Want to stick that out?
Maybe somebody will look for like 30 bucks an hour or something.
Okay, any public comment? Priscilla?
I just wanna correct, I'm not vice chair, I don't want Steve Royal to think that he's going to Unity. I, the, the committee chose Judy and I to go and present. And I've had parents and community members ask me to ask the board if you will be discussing in non-public the teacher that handed out pens that look like syringes.
Take it under advisement.
We will take that under advisement.
Okay.
They just wanted to make sure that the board discusses this.
The board is, all of us know about it. Thank you. Mary?
Um, the PTA had a fundraiser and they surpassed their goal. Mr. Gregoire, is there something that you are supposed to do?
There is.
And, would you mind explaining?
The PTA had a fundraiser for Yankee Candle, and I made an agreement, PTA, that if they achieved a $4,000 profit, I would get a mohawk. And paint that mohawk black and wear that mohawk for a few days.
At one of our meetings, yes?
I didn't say I was wearing to a meeting, but I believe there happens to be a meeting that I think the superintendent would require me to be...
That would be awesome.
Yes, that would be awesome.
Absolutely.
There's some school spirit for ya.
Exactly, and Mr. Byrne will be duct taped to the wall in the cafeteria for the whole day, for the class, in the lunchroom of the class that has raised the most money. So Mr. Byrne wanna get into spirit also.
That's awesome.
I wear, I wear a great mohawk.
I bet you do.
That's great.
Pull it off.
Sorry, Michael.
Nobody's gonna catch any flag with the assistant principal duct taped to the wall, are we?
I hope they send no pictures.
No, it's, you know, it's all a good, it's, it happens, it's not an uncommon thing. I've had mohawks, I've kissed pigs, I've...
Oh, mohawk, I don't see a part, but you know, maybe
It, it is, it is not...
Some people saying that maybe duct taping someone may not be appropriate or something, I don't wanna...
Well, I think it's...
All in good fun.
I think it's all in good spirit, I would hope if Mr. Byrne's not offended by it.
Can you tweet that picture out, please?
I was gonna say, is he getting like whipped cream pies in the face too, or is he just gonna be duct taped?
What's that?
Whipped cream pies too, or just duct taped?
Whipped cream pies come on the PTA fundraiser for the PTA fall meeting.
When is that?
That is two weeks, I believe, the exact date.
So, in case anybody's interested, Mr. Gregoire tweets now. Um, and you might wanna tell him your little Twitter handle.
@PaulPrincipal underscore.
In case anybody would like to follow him.
Follow me, probably, I probably posted that a couple times today.
And I've watched his video blogs, by the way, and they're, they're pretty good, I liked the little bow tie. Pretty spiffy.
That's awesome.
Okay, can I, thanks, guys, for coming, we're going in and on public.
Okay. Does he wanna, do you wanna just get a shout-out for the toucher truck?
Oh, the toucher truck, yeah, coming up on October 17th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Be lots of, you know, fire trucks, police cars, construction vehicles, emergency vehicles. It's gonna be a great event, so come on down.
Yeah, I know, we're not having that.
17.
October 17th, from 10:00 to 1:00.
I wanna make a motion to go into non-public, please.
I wanna make a motion to go into non-public at the RSA 91A, so we'll call three, two, A and C.
Thank you, guys, we won't be long.
Okay. I gotta let the PTA know, I have probably like... What? Oh, please. Yeah, they did. My dad's bad.
No. Bonnie, make your motion, please.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.